Well, thank you and good evening. I am your moderator, Christine James. Welcome to a W A T D political forum. I'm joined by reporter Charles Mathewson from W A T D and David Smith of the Old Colony Memorial asking questions tonight. The race is for the Plymouth Select Board. Six candidates are vying for two seats. Incumbent Dickie Quintle, along with Wrestling Brewster, Kevin Canty, Vedna Haywood, Frank Mann, and Everett Malaguti. All six candidates were invited, all six confirmed. Four of them are in here in studio right now. We'll see if anybody comes late, and that's Frank Mann, Kevin Canty, Wrestling Brewster, and Vedna Haywood. Timing you all is our own Lenny Rowe, and we're joined by media partner, PACT TV. Thanks so much for joining us. Now, our format is simple. We've asked the candidates to have prepared opening and closing statements ready, no longer than two minutes open, and one minute close, please. Then we have a round of questions from the reporters, and then a lightning round where answers are either yes or no, or two sentences tops. And I always like to tell people too, to remember, we've got the construction paper over there, green, red, and yellow. Green means go. Yellow means you have 10 seconds. Red means stop. And then I give you a five-second grace period. If you're still talking on the red, you get the bell. And then if you're still talking through the bell, which happens very rarely, then we cut your microphone. So we try to keep everybody to a good, quick time during this evening. Now, just before we started, we had our own Charles Mathewson pull the names of the candidates and decide what the opening and closing order would be, and we will go with, oh, good evening. Come on in, have a seat. Got Everett Malaguti there. So the order that was chosen was Dick Quintle, Wrestling Brewster, Kevin Canty, Vedna Haywood, Frank Mann, and Everett Malaguti. So since Dick Quintle is not here, we are going to begin with Wrestling Brewster. Two minutes, your opening statement.
Thank you. I want to thank W A T D for allowing me to speak tonight. We as a town need to do better. The people of Plymouth are watching. Every week I hear about a board or a committee that did or said something bad. It's always infighting, or bad communication, or lack of communication. Plymouth deserves better. We need to start by getting back to our core values. All of this divisive and destructive behavior is extremely unproductive. First, we need to unite all branches of our government with better communication and the buy-in to work together for the future of Plymouth. We need to decide where we want to be in 20 years, which will tell us what we need to do tomorrow. Then we need to set out to doing the business of our great town. I want the opportunity to unify our government and create a more cohesive and respectful leadership. Then I want to start planning for our future. Vote for me, Wrestling Brewster, on May 20th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was the opening statement from Wrestling Brewster. Now let's go to the opening statement from Kevin Canty.
Thank you. So my name is Kevin Canty. I'm a lifelong Plymouth resident, a local attorney, and I've served on Plymouth's Advisory and Finance Committee for the last nine years, serving as its chair for the past four years. I believe that this gives me the extensive financial knowledge that a member of the Select Board would need, as well as knowledge of how the town's government operates in order to be effective on day one of becoming a member of the Select Board. If elected to the Select Board, I would be focusing on three primary goals: implementing smart and balanced development throughout Plymouth, a focus on strategic planning, and reducing the burden on residential taxpayers. Smart and balanced development would mean balancing the need for new residential, new commercial growth with affordable housing needs, and of course, conservation. Plymouth is going to continue to grow whether we like it or not, but we can manage that growth with proper leadership, and I have the skills to get that done. When I talk about strategic planning, it's about getting ahead of our problems before they get a hold of us. Plymouth is constantly being reactive. We need to be proactive and get out ahead of our problems. And lastly, of course, reducing the burden on the residential taxpayer. We need to attract new businesses to Plymouth, businesses that pay good living wage jobs that allow more Plymouth residents to live and work in the same town. I believe that implementing these strategies will make it easier for folks to live, work, raise a family, and retire in Plymouth. I think that's the most important thing that a member of the Select Board should aspire to, and I have the skills and qualifications to get that done, and I would ask for your vote on Saturday, May 20th. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the opening statement from Kevin Canty. Now let's go to opening statement for Vedna Haywood.
First, I would like to thank W A T D for organizing this forum and PACT TV for providing a means by which the Plymouth residents have an opportunity to hear the candidates' views on particular issues facing the town. Hello, my name is Vedna Haywood, and I am running for Plymouth Select Board. My candidacy is about our town and my partnership with you, which will help shape the future of Plymouth. I'm running because I believe in Plymouth. I believe in its people, its possibilities, and its progression. A little bit about me, I'm a transplant from South Florida, and my husband and I moved to Massachusetts 15 years ago when he wanted to come back home and raise a family. 14 years ago, I chose Plymouth on a day trip. We moved here not knowing anyone, and what we found was community and family. My husband Jim and I live in South Plymouth with our son James. I'm a surgical-trauma ICU nurse, and I've had to make critical life and death decisions in a timely manner. I've served the community of Plymouth for the past 13 years. My service has included being your twice-elected school committee member, working in the areas of policy negotiations, budgets, and safety. I have also been a member of the No Place for Hate Committee for 11 years and a chair for the past three. I've served Plymouth and the surrounding areas on multiple boards and committees such as the Advisory Board for B I T Plymouth, Plymouth Area Board for the Department of Children and Families, Hope Floats in Kingston, the League of Women Voters at the state and national level, and the Plymouth Heal Communities. My experience ranges from the local to national level, giving me a broader perspective on Plymouth's needs, and now I am more knowledgeable based on my extensive experience and better positioned to serve on the Select Board. I have put in the time and dedication towards the community, and I have the experience, integrity, and background to take on the challenges involved in being an effective Select Board member, and I ask for your vote, one of your votes, on May 20th. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the opening statement from Vedna Haywood. Now let's go to Everett Malaguti. I mean, excuse me, Frank Mann was next. I'm sorry.
Hello, this is Frank Mann, candidate for the Plymouth Select Board. There are many issues that will motivate people to go to the polls on May 20th. Water is increasingly a concern that residents cite, the pros and cons of development, and the need for long-term planning, to name just a few. But after seven months of campaigning all around town, I want to return to the one issue that is at the heart of any campaign: qualifications. I certainly don't question that the five other candidates are qualified to serve as a member of the Select Board. The incumbent Dickie Quintle has, right on his signs, "Experience Counts." Mr. Canty likes to say, "All roads lead through the Finance Committee," a committee he has capably led for five years. Mr. Brewster is amazing to say is a direct descendant of one of the Pilgrim Fathers, and he says he aspires to be a great leader himself. A broader, more inclusive sense of community is at the heart of Ms. Haywood's campaign. And Mr. Malaguti, I think his greatest qualification is his endless enthusiasm to play a part in this democratic experiment. And me, I believe my chief qualification is attitude. I actually believe we can get things done. I actually believe that residents' participation is key. I actually believe that government should do everything out in the open. I actually believe developers and conservationists can work together. I believe in the many, not the few. That's my attitude. My name is Frank Mann, candidate for Select Board. Thank you.
Thank you. That was Frank Mann's opening statement. Now let's go to Everett Malaguti.
Thank you. My name is Everett Malaguti. I am running for a seat on the Plymouth Select Board on the ballot on May 20th. I have heard for many years, my tenure as a town meeting member, from all different backgrounds on, that residents need to be first and foremost. The residents are the ones that control, through their tax dollars, how Plymouth operates. The residents want certain services and attain to have better services aspired to them. I have always been open for creative, out-of-the-box ideas, and I always am a leading charge at that. A little bit about me, I am a fourth-generation resident of Plymouth. My family has spent a life here, creating jobs and being an integral part of the community. I aspire to be as good as they are and hopefully better than they are, but I probably will never attain that. But I always look at myself as the residents first. I make sure that, as a scribed fiscal watchdog on town meeting, that I make sure that every voice is heard and every penny is accounted for, and I will do the same as the Select Board, and I hope for your vote on May 20th. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the opening statement from Everett Malaguti. Now let's go to questions from our reporters. Charles Mathewson from W A T D, question for the candidates.
Folks, we could spend the whole hour on the proposed charter, but our purpose here is to let our listeners know who you are as individuals. So we're going to limit the charter questions to one, and that is, there are many provisions in the charter. Which one do you think is, would be of the best, the greatest benefit to the town? And which one provision do you think would be very bad for the town? Let's go in order of seating.
Okay. You want to do that?
Sure. Why not?
Let's start with Frank Mann.
So as a charter commission member, it's kind of difficult for me to say which one is the worst for the town, because I believe the process was wonderful, the compromises were many. So I don't think I have one that I would pull back from at all. My favorite one, what would that be? I really like the idea of having a committee that has oversight over who gets on other committees. The Select Board has, and the Planning Board and many other committees appoint many people during the year to serve on various committees, steering committees and such. And in the past, that's been kind of casual, or it's been political. And one thing it hasn't been is orderly or a process that you can follow or understand. So I really believe that having a group that steps back and is objective and makes recommendations, no one has to follow them, is very key to having the right people in the right place for our growing community. Thank you.
Everett?
So the worst part about the charter, in my opinion, I would say, is the multiple areas of overreach by all departments, boards, and committees, and I believe that it's going to stymie how government is actually functioning now and actually create a much larger road block to actually get things done that we currently do and not looking forward into the future. The positive part about the charter that I could say is something that exists within the current charter already but was just more emphasized, is the Committee of Precinct Chairs. I would say that that got a little bit enlightened, because they are going to have more oversight for different attributes, especially for town meeting and how things are functioning budget-wise. I believe that that was more akin to be looked at during the past and current charter versions, and I think that that would be a positive attribute. Thank you.
Kevin Canty.
So if I had to pick one provision that I think is the worst in the charter, I would say that it would be the addition of a third town meeting. People say that town meeting is not, that form of government is not responsive enough, and some people that think that think adding another town meeting would improve that. Actually makes it worse, because every town meeting is not just a Saturday, it's months of prep time beforehand by boards and committees, but also by department heads, division heads, and other stakeholders in town. The fact that you're adding a third town meeting would put Plymouth really in almost constant town meeting mode for at least nine months of the year. Things are already falling through the cracks presently, and distracting folks by preparing for the next town meeting constantly is only going to make things fall through the cracks even more and end up costing the residents more money, which I don't think is a positive. In terms of a good provision in the charter, I think the emphasis on communication is beneficial. That's something that I'd like to see worked on by a charter review committee after the fact.
Wrestling Brewster.
Yeah, full disclosure, I'm one of the charter commissioners as well. I knew on election night I wasn't going to get what I felt was the best change for the form of government. But what we did work on, and what I really was working on, is what the public told me. They're not happy. They're not happy with their government. They don't feel that they're well-represented. They don't feel that there is equal government, that there's no checks and balances. So what we did with this charter was we tried to find ways to even out the structure and the responsibility. We tried to bring up the precinct chairs. And another full disclosure, for five years, I've been trying to get the precinct chairs to take the power that they already have and use it, and try to get better government. So I think the best thing that we looked at is trying to equal out that form of government and give the public what they, they were demanding. They were demanding a better form of government. I think one of the things that we should have worked harder on is conflict of interest, and that's my two things.
Thank you very much.
Vedna Haywood.
So the parts that I actually do like out of the charter are a five-member legislative oversight committee to track the status of articles placed by, or passed by town meeting, because there's been an issue in terms of when particular articles are passed, they kind of remain in the ether, and they aren't necessarily actualized. So I do like that piece. I like the fact that the Director of Planning will be responsible for the compliance of the master plan. Once again, another item that has been shelved that, and isn't necessarily actualized. So I do agree with that. One piece I don't agree with is actually the town moderator being elected by the town meeting representatives as opposed to the, being, as opposed to what is happening now, where it's a town-wide election for the town moderator.
Thank you all.
Okay. That was good. David Smith.
Okay. Each of you already serves on at least one committee, some of you more than one. What is it about running as a Select Board member or serving on the Select Board that you can accomplish that you feel like you may not be able to do with your current position?
Let's start with Kevin Canty.
Sure. So I am the Chair of the Advisory and Finance Committee. I have been for the last four years, and I've been on the Advisory and Finance Committee for the last nine years. So we give recommendations to town meeting as to every article that is going before town meeting as to how they should vote. That includes the budget, capital items, projects, proposed pieces of special legislation, everything. But we are reviewing the work of others in doing that. We're not doing the work ourselves. But I know how to get, how that work can get accomplished effectively by having a cohesive plan, a concrete presentation, and consistent follow-through, all the way from when you first think of the idea, all the way to when the vote is held on town meeting floor. I've seen good proposals fail because they didn't have that follow-through all the way through that process. So I would like to be involved in not just reviewing these proposals and plans, but actually formulating them, implementing them, and coming up with strategies that will make it easier for folks to live, work, raise a family, and retire in Plymouth.
Okay. Same question. Everett Malaguti.
So as one of the members that actually sits on many boards in town, Chair of a couple, I would state that, similar to Kevin, that I actually look at different things that are not always at the helm of the current Select Board or past Select Board. It depends upon issues, but I think that by sitting on it, I can actually show a viewpoint that isn't always seen by the boards and committees through just a regular Select Board meeting. I think there are issues that aren't always raised by the Select Board. I think that the Select Board usually attains to more people actually coming to the podium for public comment, making issues known that are immediate issues, but not necessarily always long-range issues. And I think that by sitting on these different vast committees that actually look at short, mid, and long-range goals, that I can actually help attain a lot better aspects for the residents and for the board as a whole. Thank you.
Same question, Vedna Haywood.
So for me, being a member of the school committee, one thing, it's not, it's not that there is not something that I have not been able to do on the school committee. I feel that having that experience of being on the school committee, being with people with varying beliefs and viewpoints, I've had the opportunity to work with people who put those things aside, and they've worked to do what's best for our school district, what's best for our town. And so that's what I feel that I will bring to the Select Board. So it's not more of me finding some sort of gap within the particular board that I'm in. It's more of how can I bring some of the skill and some of the experience that I've learned from the various boards and impart them onto this particular board.
Same question. Thank you. Same question, Frank Mann.
Well, I'm in a particular situation as a member of the Planning Board, which is considered on our present charter, and Executive Board at that level. But I've always felt that the glass ceiling for that board was the Select Board. I mean, there are many things in terms, including the master plan and regulatory changes and things like that, that without the, not necessarily consent, but the cooperation of the Select Board just goes so far. And I really felt, especially with the master plan and other issues like that, and our, the rate of growth and the need to protect our environment, that I needed to be in a position, if possible, where I could be part of that long-range visioning, that I could set that standard or that ideal, and give permission as well, in a sense, to the other boards to work in those directions. Right now, I've felt many instances where the things that I want to accomplish on the Planning Board were just not possible without the consent, or permission, or participation of the Select Board, and I'd like to see that changed.
Okay. Same question, Wrestling Brewster.
Ten years on the town meeting floor, and six of those years Committee of Precinct Chairs. I've seen warrant article and article after article come through town meeting, and it leaves town meeting, and town meeting has nothing to do with it. Committee of Precinct Chairs have said, "We'd really like to know where this project is or that project is." And we're met with a barrier after barrier. And running for this, I've spoke to the town manager, I've spoke to the Development Director, I've spoken to Lee Hartman, and it's amazing to me what I don't know as a town meeting member, and what I don't see as a town meeting member. A lot of the stuff that I want to do is planning, and I met with Lee Hartman, and he said, "Yeah, we're doing that." And I said, "Why don't we know that?" And I really see that as a breakdown in our government, where the legislative body who's asked to vote on a $280 million budget doesn't know half the stuff that they should know. Thank you.
Thank you. Bobby Clark, our Plymouth correspondent, sent me a couple questions to ask. I'm going to ask one of them. If you were making a sales pitch to a commercial organization to locate in Plymouth, what would be your main selling points? Let's start with you, Wrestling.
Wow. What would be my main selling points? We're ready for you. I want to be, I want to be the town that is ready for them. We're not. But as a selling point, we have, we have all that you need. We have pad-ready places, we have development that we'd like to have you have, we have affordable housing, we have the stuff that we want you to come. We're going to be welcoming to you. I want to work with all of our government agencies to create a better PR. We're known as, in the state of Massachusetts, is the worst place to be doing business. I think we can change that. I think we can change that by reaching out to these commercial developers and getting to know what they need and what they want, so that we can sell to them, so that we can look at them and say, "All right, this is what you need, this is what we're going to do to get there, and we're going to plan for it, and we're going to make us the best place to do business in the town, state of Massachusetts."
Thank you, Wrestling Brewster. Frank Mann, what's your sales pitch to these commercial organizations that want to come into Plymouth?
Well, my sales pitch has really changed in the last few years. At one point, I just couldn't believe that we had a difficulty attracting people. We have everything in this town in terms of the quality of life that we aspire to. I mean, we have the 37 miles of coastline and the 450 ponds, historic legacy, a built-in tourism base. It seems like we're the perfect place. So why are we always on bended knees saying, "Please come, we need to remove regulations, we'll do anything we can to have you?" And part of the problem, I think, is a lack of pride in what we have, but another part is that we're just not looking for high-quality development, in my opinion. I think we're looking for any development. Come to us, we'll, we'll do what we can. And I think that attitude creates, over the course of years, mediocre sensibility about our community, when we should have more pride in it. And we should also, I think, be focusing on specific types of businesses and doing what we can to make them happen. They talk about the blue economy and other things, but what have we actually done to really make it possible for them to have an ease of transition and come to our town? That's what I'd like to see some changes. So my, my sales pitch has definitely changed.
Thank you. Same question, Kevin Canty.
Sure. So I guess my pitch would depend somewhat on what type of business I'm talking to. If it's a medical or biotech, which are businesses that I'd like to see more of in Plymouth, I'd say, "Look, we don't just have Jordan Hospital anymore, now we have a branch of Beth Israel Deaconess down here." Or, and if I'm on the Select Board, I'm going to be strengthening that relationship and leveraging it to attract more of those businesses to Plymouth and make better use of that existing relationship. If it's another type of business, I'd say, "We have vocational schools in Plymouth and around Plymouth. We're going to be with me on the Select Board, increasing our relationship with them to have people open up more trade jobs, carpenters, electricians, plumbers," because that's the basis of a local economy. And for any type of business, I'd say, "Look, we're 45 minutes to an hour from Boston, 45 minutes to an hour from Providence, we're right on the coast, we're right above Cape Cod, we've got Route 3 running through us and Route 44. We've got a lot of geographical benefits. We're a beautiful place to set up shop and a beautiful place for your employees to move to, and we'd love to have you, and I'm going to be working hard to make it easier for new businesses to open in the town of Plymouth."
Thank you. Let's, same question, let's go to Vedna Haywood.
So the pitch would be, "We are growing, and we would like you to grow with us." And so I would just say that we're a community-centered, historic town with varying areas in terms of farmland, suburbia, coastline, forestry, and that if you, as a commercial business and/or a small business, want to come to our town, this is about a relationship that we not only have with our residents, but it's a relationship we will also have with you.
Okay. Thank you. And then let's go to Everett Malaguti. Same question.
So I would say that we are open for business. Many years, we've been talking about trying to attract business, and it's been stymied. We've had lengthy permitting processes, hard to get businesses here because of different viewpoints, but we expanded on how we actually are attracting business. Online permitting has actually helped us out a lot, that we were lagging many, many decades for attracting businesses. I would say that we have everything that the big city can offer in a small-town package and atmosphere with family-friendly activities, large coastline, many trails and forests to look forward to. We're close to the big city, but not the congestion and headaches of the big city. And I would say that we have everything to offer, and please come and offer us, offer yourself to us. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. You've been listening to a political forum here of the candidates for the Select Board in the town of Plymouth. We've got five out of the six here. We've got Wrestling Brewster, Kevin Canty, Vedna Haywood, Frank Mann, and Everett Malaguti. We're going to take a quick break now and be back right after this. You're listening to 95.9 W A T D. That's right, we are back here in Studio B tonight, a political forum. The race is for the Select Board in the town of Plymouth. Six candidates for two seats. Five of those candidates are here tonight. We just gave you the lineup: Everett Malaguti, Frank Mann, Vedna Haywood, Kevin Canty, and Wrestling Brewster. We've got Charles Mathewson from W A T D asking questions, and we've got David Smith from, now, I say Old Colony Memorial, but you're really affiliated with like 500 other papers. Am I missing any of your titles?
So far, it's just reported.
Okay, good. Thank you. Reporter of the free world there, I wasn't quite sure.
Doing a lot of on-tenets.
Definitely. Right before the break, I finished up with a question. Let's go to you, Charles Mathewson.
We were just discussing, you were just discussing, commercial development. When my son comes to town, he always has the same remark, and he's coming from New York City, which is, "What's happening to Plymouth? I may as well have stayed home. There's so many condos, and the residential development has gone crazy." First, do you agree that we're kind of condo-ed out, and what would you do about it? Start with Vedna. Haywood.
I do agree that we're kind of condo-ed out. I think that in terms of development, we need to work to incorporate more smart growth principles that implement, like using more of this mixed-use centers. Many communities are transforming older buildings and commercial strips into intense, like, multi-story or mixed-use buildings, and that leaves less of a footprint within our community. So I think we need to look at spaces that are being underutilized, spaces that have already been, you know, quasi-developed, rather than looking at open space that has not been. So I do agree that we've been condo-ed out.
Okay. Let's go to Wrestling.
Yeah. And the problem is that we don't have any control. We really don't. We've lost control. We need to get more control of our land with land banks and situations where we're looking at positive growth, and, because if developers are left to their own devices, they're going to buy the land and they're going to develop what is making money, and that's condos. Every time you turn around, there's another condo, there's another. And we really need to get control of our land, and we need to look to the future. You look at the oasis. The oasis went through three different developers, and the people around the development said, "We don't want this." So you have to always consider, when you say, "We don't want a car dealership," well, you're ending up with the oasis, where, you know, you're getting a multi, I mean, a multi-level development with a whole bunch of houses. So I think that those people would look back and say, "Oh gee, we wish we would have gone for the, for the, for the car dealership." So I think we really need to look for our future. So I, I think we really need to look for our future. We need to get control of our land, the more control over the land, the better we're off.
Thank you. Let's go to Frank Mann, same question.
So the question is, could you repeat the question?
We have too many condos, and what would you do about it?
We have a lot of condos, and I'm not sure they're in the best locations. I'm not sure we have too many, but most people would react that we do. I think it's a matter of really a planning process. I think we've got to jumpstart that master plan process now and get what the people want on the agenda and make it happen. I think there's an assumption that because of financial constraints, that we need to move slowly on the master plan. I completely disagree with that. I think that without immediately jumping into it and having full participation of the residents, that it's a process that's doomed to fail. We need to give our full attention to this, and we need to consider a moratorium as well. I think a moratorium, a building moratorium in Plymouth would be like a merry-go-round that we can slow down enough to grasp the, the ring, the brass ring, because we're moving too fast right now. And if we maybe dedicated an entire year to that process, to the master plan process, and had a moratorium then, I think that could really work. But we need to do whatever we can to make this happen and slow growth.
Same question, Everett Malaguti.
So for condos, definitely, I would say that we are condoed out. And not to put any bad lighting on condos, they are a good form of housing for us to have a mixed stock, but I think that they have proliferated in not the best sites, they've just come out of nowhere for poor lack of master planning for the entire community. And I believe that's, I think that we need to look at better, use better strategic planning for not just our budgetary matters, but of how we actually want Plymouth to look at 20, 50, 100 years from now. And I think that's one of the main points that is done for us. It'll help us better find areas for affordability, for housing, and also better aesthetic value for our neighborhoods. But I believe we also need better control of our land, and that's part of the master planning process too, not just with regulations, but a combination of regulations, land baking, maybe changes to how the state parameters work for housing and development as well.
Okay, thank you. Kevin Canty.
Yeah, so I think we do have too many condos, particularly in certain areas where they're really clustered and they're creating a lot of density for, that is detrimental to those neighborhoods. When I talk about smart and balanced development, part of that is, is leading the pack on residential growth and directing it to areas that have the infrastructure to sustain it and aren't already overblown in terms of the density that they're experiencing already. Plymouth is going to continue to grow whether we like it or not, but we can manage that growth with the proper leadership. We should be, we should be looking at a land bank, but that's special legislation. If we were to get that legislation together today, it would take about two years to pass through the State House. The Cape and Islands, Cape has had a land bank in the past, Nantucket and Martha's Vineyard still do, it's worked well for them. But in the short term, we should be looking at our zoning. That's something that we can directly control today to direct this residential growth into places that are more suitable for it and away from areas that are already experiencing this acute density. And the land bank is more of a long-term solution. So those are the things that I would do if I were on the Select Board to get a hold on residential growth.
Okay. David Smith, question for candidates.
This is a little turning the tables. You've all been doing all these forums, answering questionnaires, having your own events. Is there a subject or an issue or a question you've wanted to be asked or a topic that hasn't come up that you want to just put out there?
Frank Mann.
There's been a lot of talk to the side about the harbor and the potential of a cruise ship coming in, and that's caused me to talk to a lot of people about the realities of the harbor. The, the reality, I think, is that it's still an underutilized resource. And now we have three dozen shellfish operations. We still have a, I think, one of the top lobster fleets in Massachusetts, and yet it's almost invisible, it's being covered up, there's the wrong kind of development happening downtown. I think we, people, when they come to town, are really looking, especially if they're from the Midwest or other places, they're really looking for that slice of Americana that New England seems to represent to them. And I think we should really emphasize that tourism aspect down there also, but that suggests to me as well that the cruise ship that they're talking about is maybe not the best idea. It's something that maybe could be moored out in the cow pasture, as they call it out in the harbor, but not infringe upon our shellfishing and our lobster fleet.
Kevin Canty, same question.
So, I've been asked some questions about this, but not really enough in terms, in terms of what I would think. I think we should be doing more about affordable housing in Plymouth. Affordable housing is something that if we don't do, if we don't get 10% of our available housing stock into what is deemed affordable by state standards, we're subject to 40Bs like the Oasis. That can override local zoning, and that's bad, because then we can get it in areas that we don't want it, including areas that are zoned for commercial or light industrial land, which is land that we're looking to have more of an economic benefit from. Instead, we're getting high-density residential, which is a net negative and costs us more than we get in taxes from them. So I would like to have more organic affordable housing throughout Plymouth that's actually affordable. 40B housing is pegged to affordable housing in the metro Boston area. If we create our own affordable housing with our own standards, we can provide this necessary service to residents and have actual affordable housing and get in safe harbor and avoid 40Bs for making decisions for us instead of making our own.
Let's go to Wrestling Brewster.
Yeah, and I, I, there's a lot of talk about planning, there's a lot of talk about our government, there's a lot of talk about where we're going and how we're going to get there. Been talking to a lot of people, be about the charter. I think one of the reasons that there is a charter commission is that the people of Plymouth don't feel they're well-represented. And the people I've been talking to, they, they say, should I vote for this charter or should I not? And my answer to them is, you know, you really need to read it. There's some good stuff in there, there's some bad stuff, it's, it's up to you to fight for your democracy. And what I've been getting lately is, you know, Wrestling, it doesn't matter what form of government we have, it's the leaders of the town that matter. Because whether you have a mayor, or you have a council, or you have town meeting, it doesn't matter what form of government. So we really need to get to, back to the form of government that the people have respect for and agree with. I, I think that that's where we need to start.
Thank you. Venna Haywood, same question.
So, like many of you have mentioned, I've had variant issues that have come up regarding infrastructure, regarding communication or lack thereof, regarding growth and development, regarding climate issues. These are some of the issues that have come up in, in some of these forums and/or meet and greets. What I haven't heard come up is public health issues. We are in like COVID recovery. That is, that is a near and adjacent issue. And out of that has come, has uncovered other issues, like social determinants of health that exist here, whether that be affordable housing, accessibility, clean water. We've had major issues in our community regarding mental health, substance abuse. Our hospitals are inundated, they're full. We need to plan for those things. Emergency management planning, we need to plan for climate disasters, any other disasters that may come up. So those are some of the things I have, I haven't heard of.
And let's go to Everett Malaguti, same question.
Sort of a tough act to follow. I would say that everyone brought up good points tonight, and I would actually state similar ones to those as well. I would state that affordability for housing and just the livability in Plymouth alone is one of the main things that we have heard pieces of and asked pieces about, but we really haven't been asked a holistic view on that. It's just been either housing or taxes and stuff like that. And I think we need to look at how every aspect of what government does affects the lives of Plymouth residents, and we need to make sure that everything is affordable for the residents, but also we maintain the exact services that the residents demand as well too, because we can't have one or the other, it needs to be a balanced approach. Though in the hindsight as well, we also need to explore unutilized areas, and Mr. Mann actually brought that up for the harbor. The harbor is actually one thing that we really need to exploit a lot better and better utilize, not just for revenue, but for the aspect of our tourism industry and our residents. And I think that we need a better working waterfront to attain that.
You know, it's interesting, you all have very good perspectives and good ideas about everything going on in town, some ideas about change. I want you to pretend now that this is speed dating, and you've got one minute to tell me why you're the person to affect that change or implement policies. So let's start with Kevin Canty, one minute. Don't, don't hold back.
I've promised you I won't. So I have nine years of experience working in this government, I have 10 years of experience as a local attorney, and 37 years of experience of like, of living in Plymouth. So I know the struggles of being a Plymouth resident, and I know the benefits of being a Plymouth resident. But I also know how our government works, I know how to get things done within it, and I have legal skills that would be an asset to the board. So on day one, I would have the qualifications to effectuate my agenda and see those policies actually implemented and make positive changes to residents to, again, make it easier for people to live here, to work here, to raise their families here, and to retire here. That's what I think people want. You know, they want smart and balanced development, they want strategic planning to be a focus so that we're not constantly going from crisis to crisis. And they want to reduce the burden on residential taxpayers. I've heard that over the years, I've seen it over the years, and I actually know how to get those things done because of my experience, and I stand on my track record of professionalism and leadership in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, that was Kevin Canty. Same question, Venna, one, one minute, why should people vote for you?
Well, people should vote for me because my, because I have 25 years' experience in, including a range of community service and nonprofit work from local to national level. I've had the opportunity to affect and impact change, create policy and programming, assist with strategic planning and negotiations, and oversee multimillion-dollar budgets. And furthermore, I, I love Plymouth, I love its people, and I want to do what's best for them. I want to work with them, not against them, and so that's why I think I'm the best.
Everett, let's hear your, your one-minute speed dating story.
So I would say that my past 13 years on town meeting and other boards and committees, I have made sure that my voice is for the residents, not against the residents or just my own personal views. I want to work, and that's the actual job of a board member, is you need to work for the residents. They're the ones that elect you, they're the ones that look up to you to actually make the best results for them and a better opportunity for them. I want to make sure that every voice from the teenagers, aren't allowed to vote yet because of age, all the way up to the elderly that we have, that everyone has the opportunity to not just participate, but to engage themselves. And I believe I have the tenacity and passion from my entire experience within town government and in community organizations that I have the attributes to make effective change for the residents.
Same question, Wrestling Brewster.
Yeah, I think the past four years, I've, I've been talking to residents, thousands of residents, to get them to create this charter, and I, I have the ability to take all of that in and come to a conclusion that is good for all. I think if you ask anybody on the Charter Commission as a minority, one of the two minorities on that commission, I had the ability to listen to everything and come to a conclusion that brought all of it together. I think that's one of the great things about the Charter Commission, that we all had different, different ideas of how we should form our government, but we all came together and came up with some pretty good stuff. I, I think that, I've, I've been fighting for the town of Plymouth for, for 10 years on, on town meeting floor, and I, the one thing that comes out from talking to the town of Plymouth is they don't feel they have a voice, they don't feel that they have people who speak for them, and I'm ready to do that.
Same question, Frank Mann.
I think people that know me know that ever since I came here 40 years ago, which makes me a lot older than Mr. Canty since he's lived here in his entire life. But anyone who knows me knows that I have a personal, emotional tie to the community and a commitment to the community, and almost everything I've done since I've been here has been community-oriented. Almost from the beginning, I got, became involved in Little League and became the Little League president in South Plymouth Little League. I was on the task force doing homelessness in towns, sleeping with the homeless and serving their meals and helping to raise funds for them. I, I started a group called, or an entity called Communitry, which are handmade ornaments on the town tree that celebrate the nonprofits that exist in our community, because I thought they weren't getting enough attention. I was a reporter on the Old Colony Memorial as well, and did a lot of, as I'm sure David does, a lot of extra work, a lot of round-the-clock work, because I love the community, because in a lot of ways, the newspaper allowed me to get to know the community. I've been on the Charter Commission and the Planning Board, I'm also the Vice President of the Pine Barrens Alliance Conservation Group. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Charles Mathewson now, questions for the candidates.
Do you think there's too much mining of sand and gravel, and is it threatening our water? Who should we go to first?
Let us go to, let's go to Everett first.
So I would say, yes, there actually is a bit too much of sand and gravel removal. I think that while we want development, we need to make sure that we're protecting not just the environment that surrounds it, but also the aquifer that's beneath it. That is why we want growth in the first place, and why we have growth is because of our pristine aquifer and our sole source aquifer, in fact. And I think that we need a balanced approach for sand and gravel removal. I think that we have seen somewhat excessive in areas that need to actually be more protected, and we need better oversight of our earth removal, sorry, our earth removal bylaw that we have in place, and I think that better attention and adherence to that will balance out both sides equitably.
Same question, Frank Mann.
It's not just about the amount of sand and gravel removed or the amount of operations that are taking place, it's, it's really the damage that this does. It's a damage disproportionate to any value that these bring to any businesses. Because when you, when you remove the sand and gravel, you remove that protection that the aquifer has, you remove the soils which have been developed over thousands of years, which contribute to the health of the environment. You, you affect the ability of the land to recharge that water, so not only can you more pollute the, more likely pollute the water, but you can also create other damage to it and not, not be able to recharge, as I said. It's just a whole series of connected things that sand and gravel do when you remove them and the amounts that they do, and it's, it's really got to be stopped, and we have to change that bylaw.
Okay. Same question, Venna Haywood.
I mean, I would echo what Frank says. We, we need to have better oversight in terms of the, the earth removal bylaw. Also too, it is a disruption of the area. It is, you have this protective layer which doesn't, which protects our aquifer, and by removing that protective layer, just as you would say skin, you allow for other things to come in and thus, not only causing disruption, but some sort of, you know, I would say infective process. So now you've now disrupted our sole source aquifer. There were accounts that were made years ago regarding the sole source aquifer and what, and what could happen if there was not only excessive land removal, but even growth in terms of development, and we have not adhered to that, so.
Okay, same question, let's go to Kevin Canty.
Sure, so one of my platform planks is smart and balanced development, as I said earlier, and one of the big components underneath that is conservation concerns, specifically related to the sole source aquifer. The sole source aquifer, for people that don't know, is where Plymouth gets all of its water from. That's why it's called sole source, it's our sole source of water. Sand and gravel is part of the natural filtration process of cleaning what goes into that water. Something happens to that water, then Plymouth dies, and obviously, that would be bad. So we need to maintain water filtration that's there. But we also need to have commercial and new residential development as well as affordable housing. So I think what we need to be doing is we need to look at the current bylaw and make sure it's being enforced correctly, and make sure that the other, that smart and balanced development is being implemented across the board. Yes, we want more commercial businesses and more residential to meet housing needs, but we need to be looking at what the effect of that is on our water constantly, and that needs to be an ongoing process as our technology continues to develop and our understanding of conservation needs continues to develop as well.
And same question, Wrestling Brewster.
Yeah, I think this is indicative of our government not being on the same page. I think across the board, from the Selectmen to the Planning Board to the ZBA, they all need to be on the same page, going the same way. And I think we need to look at our bylaws, and we need to look at, at sand and gravel, and we need to all say, alright, this is important to us. So ZBA, this is what you need to do, Planning Board, this is what you need to do. And we need to start holding people accountable. I hear all about that, you know, we've taken too much sand and gravel from here, and we, you know, developer did something wrong here, and then I never hear, okay, what did we do about it? What did we, what, what did we as the governing bodies say, okay, you're in trouble, or you can't do this, or, or, we need to, we need to have good bylaws, but we also need to hold people accountable, and our government needs to get together. So if we're planning, that we look at this as our future planning.
I want to go to lightning round now, though this is the part of the forum where we ask questions of the candidates, and as you know, it's my favorite part, because people running for office can rarely just say yes or no for an answer. So the answers are either yes or no, the reporter will ask you what kind of an answer they want, or one or two sentences tops. And let's begin with Charles Mathewson, lightning round question. Lightning round question.
What's your favorite news source? Frank?
Multiple news sources, The Times, The Post, The Globe, online as well. I'm on online a lot, listening to what people are saying, trying to get a feel for that. But I think this is...
Okay, it is lightning round, lightning, lightning. Okay, Frank, Everett Malaguti.
I would say a variety of newspapers and also just talk around the town.
Okay. Kevin Canty, your favorite news source?
Locally wicked local.
Okay. Wrestling Brewster.
Hasn't come yet. There's some interesting stuff coming about.
Okay. Vedna Haywood.
That's true. I would say nationally, Washington Post, locally, The Globe. I mean, I did enjoy the OCM.
Okay, there you go. David Smith.
I get most of my news from Facebook, so make up for that when you're well.
Lightning, lightning round questions for the candidates.
Setup is probably longer than the answer. So the current Select Board renegotiated Derek Brindisi's contract, the town manager, when he had been on the job for less than a year. Without casting any aspersions on his job performance, if you were on the board at the time, would you have renewed his contract that soon?
Okay, let's start, Kevin Canty.
Yes.
Okay, Everett Malaguti.
Yes.
Okay. Frank Mann, yes or no?
No.
Okay. Wrestling Brewster, yes or no?
It was done wrong.
Okay. Vedna Haywood, yes or no?
No, I'm going to use the same, just because on the school committee, we did not follow that same.
Okay. I'm going to ask a question I ask every forum, and Plymouth, Everett, I'm sorry.
Oh, I already answered. I was after Kevin.
Yeah, he did. Aha. That's why I keep this chart here, make sure everybody is equal, mixing it up here. Plymouth County Government, stay or go? Let's start at this end. Vedna Haywood.
I'm going to hold off on that answer.
Okay. Wrestling Brewster, stay or go?
It's the worst part of government that we have. Go.
Okay. Kevin Canty.
He should go tomorrow.
Okay. Everett Malaguti, stay or go?
Go.
Okay. Frank Mann.
Go now.
Okay.
The other towns in Plymouth, Plymouth, the town of Plymouth has a special relationship with the county.
And that could be, and that could be a whole nother forum, but we're not going to go into that tonight, because with all these wonderful candidates, we're going to go to our closing statements, and we're going to reverse the order. See what happens when you're having fun here. We're going to reverse the order that we started with, so we are going to begin our closing statements with Kevin Canty.
Okay.
One minute.
Thank you. So again, my name's Kevin Canty, and I am asking for one of your votes for Select Board on Saturday, May 20. I have the legal skills, financial knowledge, and dedicated record of community service in this community that I think Plymouth needs. On day one, I could effectuate my agenda, and again, that is to implement smart and balanced development, to focus on strategic planning, and of course, to reduce the burden on residential taxpayers. I know how hard it can be to live in Plymouth, whether you're young, whether you're retired, whether you're a working mother or father, or whether you're a single individual of any age. It's a challenging place to live right now because we're not in control of our finances and our destiny, and I have the skills and knowledge of the system of government that we have in order to actually implement my agenda starting on day one and be the leader that Plymouth needs, and that's the reason that I'm asking for your vote on Saturday, May 20.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That was Kevin Canty. Everett Malaguti.
I would like to just thank WATD for the debate tonight, and I would just like to state that I'm here for the residents. I want to make sure that residents have their communication brought forward to the Select Board, Planning Board, any department in town, make sure that their voice is heard. I'm bringing a new perspective, fresh ideas, and out-of-the-box thinking that sometimes is sorely lacking within municipal government. I want to make sure that everything is on the table and make sure that I have everything that the residents need and be the voice of the residents. Make sure that our fiscal house is in order and the aesthetic value for the town is maintained. I want to make sure that everyone can afford to live, work, and play, from the young to the old, retire here, and have an equitable life and enjoyment. I ask for your vote as one of the candidates running for town for Select Board in May. Thank you.
Thank you. That was Everett Malaguti. Let's go to Vedna Haywood.
Thank you again for WATD and to my fellow candidates for participating in this shared experience. As a school committee member, I ran on advocacy, accountability, and transparency, and have remained your advocate and will continue. I want to ensure that there is fair, transparent, and professional communication. I will listen and serve Plymouth with an open mind and leave the divisiveness out of leadership and important decision-making. As a surgical trauma ICU nurse, I understand the value of making critical and timely decisions based on data, experience, and presentation, and I know how to effectively work as a team member, incorporating best practices or individualizing solutions based on what's presented. As a member of the Select Board, I will bring my 25 years of proven leadership and a measured collaborative style. I have a track record for bringing a unique perspective and insight to difficult decisions with the goal of finding the best solution. Whatever the issue, I will be guided by the shared values that make Plymouth what it is. We have a choice to make in May and how we shape this community and whom we choose to make those decisions and how we progress towards the next decade. So I ask for one of your two votes on May 20. And for more information, go to electvedna.com.
Thank you. Vedna Haywood, let's go to Wrestling Brewster.
This is an important election. Plymouth needs to fight for its democracy and get out the vote. Tell your neighbors and their friends and their neighbors and their friends, get out and vote. If you're so concerned about your taxes in your town, stop voting for people who are not. If you all get out the vote, you can get the government that can bring Plymouth together for a brighter future. I promise that I will speak for you. I will bring back integrity, decorum, and listening. I will not be swayed by special interest. I will do my best to bring all of our government together to create a plan for Plymouth that will address all your concerns and create the best future. It's time Plymouth voted for someone who is willing to fight for its community. The most effective public figures are known for fair and balanced governing. I have the ability to get people together to formulate the best outcome for the future. I will take the interests of the populace and find the middle ground to work with all parties to get it done and make our community work for all. Please tell everyone you know who wants a better future for Plymouth to vote for Wrestling Brewster for Select Board on May 20. Thank you to ATD, and thank you for everyone.
Thank you very much. Let's go to Frank Mann.